Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I'm the City Council President. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask all my colleagues and those in attendance, in the audience, to please silence your cell phones, electronic devices. Thank you. I would also like to ask everyone to be respectful to each other while the meeting is taking place. If you are disrupted, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you'll be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Royal. Present. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bock. Counselor Braden. Present. Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Present. Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara. Counselor Luizhen.
Present.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Worell. A quorum is present.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. The introduction of the clergy today, today's clergy, is Rabbi Barbara Penzer from the Temple Hill Torah in West Roxbury invited by City Council Royal. City Council Royal, would you like to come to the podium to introduce our clergy for today? Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Rabbi Barbara Penzer has served Temple Hill El Benay Torah in West Roxbury since 1995. She received the degree of rabbi and a master of Hebrew letters from the Reconstructionist Rabbinical College in Philadelphia in 1987. During her time at Temple Hill El Benay Torah, Rabbi Penzer has brought in younger families, invigorated prayer life with spirituality and depth, enriched intellectual engagement for all ages, and inspired those at Temple to act justly in the world. She is active in the Reconstructionist Rabbinical Association, the National Association of Reconstructionist Rabbis, and served as its president. She has also served as president of the Massachusetts Board of Rabbis. Rabbi Penzer is active in Greater Boston's Jewish community and in interfaith work, including leadership in the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization, the Jewish Community Relations Council, and the Jewish Labor Committee. Rabbi Penzer serves as co-chair of the New England Jewish Labor Committee and leads the annual Jewish Labor Center, which brings together labor and Jewish community leaders to celebrate Pesach as a holiday that can inspire support for workers' rights. She also serves as a member of the Faith Working Group of the Alliance for Fair Food. In 2009, Rabbi Penzer was named as a rabbinic human rights hero by the Rabbinic Voice for Human Rights. In 2016, the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Boston awarded her the prestigious Warren B. Cohen Award for Excellence in Jewish Communal Services. Rabbi Penzer was the first rabbi invited to offer the benediction at the State of City address in 2012 by then-Boston Mayor Tom Menino, and both she and her husband are the proud parents of two children, Aviva and Yona, who are now adult activists. We thank the rabbi for being with us here in council chambers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Royal, for your kind invitation to be here today. Thank you, councilors, for your presence in this auspicious day, as we are still in the beginning of a new year, as we just began the Chinese Lunar New Year, and tonight we prepare for the mayor's reflections, once again, on the state of our city. Like us to pause for a moment to celebrate this opportunity for renewal for the city and internally as well. This weekend, Jews in synagogues of all types will hear the exact same scriptural reading from our sacred scriptures, the Torah. We're going to hear about the dramatic showdown between Moses and Pharaoh. Moses says, "Let my people go," and Pharaoh refuses. Again and again, there is a standoff between them. Without divine intervention, there would have been no Exodus at all, no liberation and no Passover holiday, and we, as Jewish people, would not be here today. Now, Moses, on the one hand, is known as the most humble of all souls. What is it about Pharaoh? What is the characteristic we learn about this leader of the Egyptians, this oppressor, this slaveholder? The fundamental quality that drives his decisions is the opposite of humility. The best cardiologists of our famed Boston hospitals would recognize the source of Pharaoh's stubbornness because he had a hardened heart. That heart wasn't hardened because of an unhealthy diet. It was an unhealthy mindset that hardened his heart. Pharaoh's heart was hardened from pride and from the belief that he didn't need to listen to anyone. He lived with the cold calculation that disregarded the human tragedy that was the result of his own pride. Now, on the one hand, we might say Pharaoh is someone else, someone outside of us, an oppressor, and we are the victims of force or a power beyond us. But there is a Jewish mystical tradition that teaches that within each one of us, within each one of us dwells a Pharaoh with a hardened heart. We don't need miracles to defeat that Pharaoh. All we need is to learn how to soften our own hardened hearts. A hardened heart refuses to listen. It ties us down to the ways we have always been and keeps us in bondage to destructive habits of mind and deed. A hardened heart enslaves us to our fears. It imprisons us, isolating us from others, from feeling compassion for them, or even just listening to their ideas. The ancient Pharaoh believed that a soft heart would make him weak. What he didn't understand is that compassion can dwell alongside strength. Had his heart been softer, Pharaoh would surely have avoided the tragic confrontation that made his people suffer and led to his own ultimate downfall. Our Jewish tradition says that God asks only one thing of us, whoever we are. God asks for our heart. When we give our hearts, we have access to a much greater power than Pharaoh. We have the power to go beyond our own echoing demands, to hear each other's truth, and to work together toward a common goal. And as we pray for all those who live in the city of Boston, we pray that we may be led by strong leaders with open hearts. We pray for these city councilors, for our mayor, for all the political and civic leaders of our city and our Commonwealth, that their hearts may be softened to recognize justice even when it means that we must change. And may our hearts be softened to choose compassion even when we are hurting. We pray for all who live in our city, that their hearts may be filled with faith in your power and in each other, to work together for the best of the city of Boston. We ask you, source of life, for your guidance and your blessing, to keep the people of our city safe from harm and nurtured by your loving embrace, that they and their families may dwell in our city and grow and prosper, that our neighborhoods, all of them, be a place of peace and goodwill, that our city be a beacon to all Americans and a shining example to the world. Open our hearts to share in your many blessings together as one beautiful, disagreeable, and diverse, gifted and grateful community. And let us say, amen.
Amen. Now, at this time, can you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, can you ensure the record is reflected, that Counsel Mejia and Counsel Lara are Before we continue, I would like to ask Counselor Coletta and Counselor Luizhen to please come to the podium for a brief presentation. Counselor Coletta and Luizhen, and introduce all your guests.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am so thrilled to have the incredible Andrea Encarnaccio Martin of East Boston here to celebrate being named the 2023 School Counselor of the Year by the Massachusetts School Counselors' Association. Please give her a round of applause. She deserves it. Over the course of her career, she's counseled hundreds of students in Boston during their college and career readiness process. She's worked at another course of college, was a financial aid advisor for U Aspire, and now she's currently a guidance counselor at Boston Latin School. Not only does she counsel students on academic achievement, but has provided social and emotional support as a positive and consistent presence in the lives of many students. Some of us, I'm sure, can remember our guidance counselors and how important they were in our lives. Their care and concern meant everything to us in that moment. When we said we wanted to shoot for the moon, they told us to aim higher, and that's what Andrea does every single day. In addition to all the amazing things she already does in her personal life, she's an alumnus of City Year, is co-chair of the City Year Boston Alumni Board, and co-chair of the City Year National Alumni Board. She's also served on the Boston Mayor's Young Adult Advisory Council. And in addition to all of that, in all of her spare time, she's an avid runner. She's run three marathons, including Chicago, Washington, D.C., and Boston. Are there more that I should name?
No, I've run Boston three times.
She's run Boston three times, everybody. She also loves to travel the world. As I mentioned, she lives in East Boston with her husband, Rashawn, who is joined here today, and their daughters Savannah and Francesca. And I just want to say, we're so proud to have Andrea as an East Boston resident. She embodies the best of us as someone who provides mentorship and guidance to our young people and as someone who values service as an investment in our community. So congratulations, Andrea. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
I just want to echo a lot of what my colleague, Counselor Coletta, said. She said, she sent me a text and said, "Do you want to join me in honoring Mrs. E., how I know you?" And I was like, "Absolutely." I was unfortunately not able to be there for your official recognition because it was the same time as unveiling of the embrace, but I was just so happy that you were chosen as the Massachusetts Guidance Counselor of the Year. We missed each other at BLS. We did not overlap, although you overlapped with my sister. But you've also managed to pull me back. You implemented the BLS Career Day, and you do a really great job, as Counselor Coletta said, of making sure that our guidance counselors are helping us do the work that we need to do to meet the social and emotional needs of our young children. The work that you do is often, you're not thanked enough for that work, so thank you, thank you a million times over. So many young kids who don't have trusting adults in their lives turn to you for that guidance, for that support, and so we are ever so grateful. As we think about every day how we can support our kids, you're there doing the work, so thank you. And on behalf of the Boston City Council, I would like to present you with this citation, and it reads, "The City of Boston and City Council Official Resolution: Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Andrea Encarnaccio Martin, Mrs. E., in recognition of being named a Massachusetts School Counselor of the Year and your unwavering commitment to the well-being and success of our students. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes for continued success, that this resolution be duly signed by the president of the City Council and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the City of Boston." So, thank you. I look forward to running into you all across the city because you show up as if you were a city counselor for all of our students everywhere in East Boston, White Stadium, wherever. You're always there. So thank you, Mrs. E., and congratulations.
Thank you. I had to write down a few words because I get nervous. So thank you so much for taking the time to recognize me today at the City Council meeting. I'm honored and humbled to be standing before you. At the ceremony at school, I was surprised and overwhelmed with emotion that I couldn't find the words to truly express all my gratitude in my heart. So I first wanted to thank the giants whose shoulders I stand on, giants like my mom, Trudy Encarnaccio, my aunt, great aunt, Dorothy Lopes, my godmother, Eleanor Ponce, and my aunt, Dr. Pamela Mason. All of these women were amazing educators who inspired and taught me. Their passion, love, and drive to make a difference was incredibly powerful to me. Of course, my own teachers and coaches were integral parts of my development and success. Thank you to the Wakefield Public Schools and the University of New Hampshire, Northeastern and UMass Boston. I wouldn't be who I am today if I was not also a City Year core member and part of the City Year alumni community. I'm proud to have served in San Jose, where I learned from my students and fellow core members and staff that young people have the power to make a difference in their community when they work together. It has also helped that I've grown up with such a supportive family and a family who serves their community, believes in strong education, and doing all things to the best of one's ability. My dad, brothers John and Anthony, and my sisters Nicole and Christina are all public servants. And as an educator, I would not be who I am today without the greatest mentor of all, Zita Cousins. She's a guidance counselor at Boston Latin School. She taught me, or she was, rather, she retired. She taught me everything I know about counseling, but also stressed the importance of living with intention and taking the time to fuel the tank. I am so thankful for all the tremendous educators I've worked with through the years, from Mr. Howland at ACC, who gave me my first job, to the late Jim Montague and Ms. Kelly, who recently passed, to Beth McCoy, Mr. Mulhern, and Ms. Garrett, and all those who I continue to learn from today at Boston Latin School. You are appreciated, and I see you working so very hard. And I want to thank my nominator, Manjula Karimchetti. She's also on the City Council in Melrose. Thank you for believing in me enough to nominate me, and thank you to Masca Selection Committee for this great honor and recognition. I love working with the brilliant, resilient, creative, strong, funny, beautiful young people and their families. Thanks to the members of the Guidance and Support Services at my school. You're all incredibly hardworking people, and you are all a part of this award. You all know who you are. And a special shout-out to Elaine Silvestre, who is also a fellow colleague, and she nominated me a recommender. Yes. Her sage advice, generosity, and love are appreciated. And a huge thank you to Rose Mateer. She works tirelessly at Boston Latin School with our young people after school, and I have the honor and privilege of working with her in the Wolf Pack program. And finally, it would be nowhere without my rock, Mr. Martin back there, Rashawn Martin, and my daughters Savannah and Francesca, who are both in the Boston Public Schools. I get to, you know, see Savannah every day at school. She's at Boston Latin School. And I want to thank you for your patience when I say, "Just one more email in the evenings," your unconditional love, and your indulging me when I say, "I have these fun family ideas that end up, you know, lots of energy and sometimes exhaustion." And I'm a proud school counselor, where I have the amazing opportunity to nurture and learn from the young leaders in our community. I want my students to know that I see them, I value them, and that they can do anything they put their mind to. The work of a school counselor is so important as we face the mental health challenges that continue to impact us from the pandemic and existed before the pandemic. I ask you all to ensure that every student has the counseling support in their schools that is much needed. Our school counselors' caseloads need to be manageable, 250 or less is the national recommendation, would be nice if it was even lower than that, to allow us to get to know our students in a meaningful way. And I would encourage you all to take a look at the legislation around counseling caseloads that is currently making its way through the State House. Thank you for your continued support. Thanks.
Could I ask our colleagues to please join us for a photo?
Mr. Martin, you too. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Can we do it one more time? We've got to wait for our colleagues. Sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta and Counselor Luizhen, for this presentation today. And, Mr. Clerk, can you ensure the record is reflected, that Counselor Baker is present? And could you, I'd also like to acknowledge former City Councilor Paul Scapicchio that is here. We're on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. If ye eyes have it, thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communication from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Doc. 0210, please?
Doc. 0210, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,642,723 in 10 cents in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration program.
Thank you. This Doc. 0210 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Doc. 0211?
Doc. 0211, message in order for your approval, an order appropriating from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund, the sum of $1,475,000 for projects described in the attached order. The Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund Commission has met on December 7, 2022, and voted to approve these projects and to establish a dedicated repairs and restoration fund for the Brown Fund projects.
Thank you. Doc. 0211 will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Doc. 0212?
Doc. 0212, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant from the Friends of Crite Park. The Friends of Crite Park have offered to provide $150,000 to the Public Works Department for some of the expenses related to the Crite Park project.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Baker, the chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to suspend and pass this so we can accept this $150,000 to move this work forward.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker seeks suspension in acceptance of Doc. 0212. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ye eyes have it. The Doc. is passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Doc. 0213 and 0223?
Doc. 0213, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Curtis R. Chemeny as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May 1, 2026. Doc. 0214, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Maurice N. Feingold as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May 1, 2026. Doc. 0215, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sandra Steele as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May 1, 2026. Doc. 0216, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Edward Redenberg as a member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2026. Doc. 0217, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Andrew Shelburne as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2026. Doc. 0218, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ernest Costin as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2024. Doc. 0219, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Tanvi Neir as an alternate member of the Back Bay Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on December 31, 2028. Doc. 0220, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Suliman Gajiri as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2024. Doc. 0221, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Dr. Angela Paige Cook as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2025. Doc. 0222, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Andy Chan-Patera as an alternate member of the Back Bay Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on December 31, 2026. And Doc. 0223, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Thomas Hi as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on December 31, 2023. Doc. 0224, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Carl Richardson as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring June 1, 2025. Doc. 0225, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Richard Golofsky as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring January 6, 2026. Doc. 0226, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Zari Amir Housini as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring May 1, 2025. Doc. 0227, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Wesley Ireland as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2024. Doc. 0228, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of G. Paul Karen as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2024. Doc. 0229, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Elizabeth Dean Clower as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2024. Doc. 0230, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Juan Ramirez Tapia as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board. Tapia as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2024. Docet number 0231, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Olivia Richard as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2024. Docet number 0232, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Paulette Spriggs Duret as a member of the Disability Commission Advisory Board for a term expiring January 26, 2026. Docet number 0233, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of John Martin as a member of the Board of Examiners for a term expiring January 2, 2024. Docet number 0234, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 14, 2022. Docet number 0235, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 79 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 11, 2023. And Docet number 0236, notice was received from the mayor of her absence from the city from 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 19, 2022, returning the same day at 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, Docets 0213 to 0223 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. And Docets 0224 through 0236 will be placed on file. That is recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0108, 0110 together, please.
0108.
Yeah, 0108 through 0110, together? Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Docet number 0108, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $13,520,000 in the form of a grant for continued support of planning, exercises, training, and operational needs that will assist in building enhanced and sustainable security capabilities to help prevent, respond to, and recover from threats to acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive incidents awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Department of Emergency Management. The grant will fund the federal fiscal year 2022 Urban Area Security Initiative. Docet number 0109, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,169,623 in the form of a grant for the Boston Providence Regional Catastrophic Preparedness Project, through which we work to close known capability gaps, encourage innovative regional solutions to issues related to catastrophic incidents, and build in existing regional preparedness efforts awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, passed through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Department of Emergency Management. The grant will fund the federal fiscal year 22 Regional Catastrophic Preparedness. Docet number 0110, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $567,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 State Information System Improvements awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund specialized equipment for 564 marked and unmarked cruisers to implement the motor vehicle automated citation and crash system in Boston. The e-citation technology issues electronic traffic citations which can be printed out in the police cruisers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had an informative hearing yesterday. We were joined by Chief Benford, Department of Emergency Management, and also Deputy Superintendent Walsh from the Boston Police Department. The committee discussed the grants, inquired about the process, use of the funds, their impact on Boston, and specifically the safety of the public. With respect to Docet 0108, it provides funding for planning, exercises, training, and operational needs that help prevent, respond to, and recover from threats or acts of terrorism. Docet 0109 provides funding to support Boston Providence Regional Catastrophic Preparedness Project in order to close known capability gaps, encourage innovative regional solutions to issues related to any catastrophic incidents, as well as build on an existing regional preparedness. And Docet 0110 will fund 564 marked and unmarked police cruisers in order to implement the motor vehicle automated citation and crash system in Boston. Both passages of Docet 0108 and 0109 will ensure that Boston has the ability to prevent and respond to catastrophic and acts of terrorism. Passage of Docet 0110 will allow the Boston Police Department to purchase this equipment for e- for the e-citation broad charger, which will allow for greater efficiency and greater accuracy, as well as improved public safety and situational awareness. This time, as Chair recommends, passage of Docet 0108, 0109, and 0110. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report. Passage of Docet 0108. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 0108 is passed. Councilor Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docet 0109. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 0109 is passed. Councilor Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report. Passage of Docet 0110. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 0110 has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0135, please.
Docet number 0135, petition for a special law relative to reorganization of the Boston School Committee.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Royo, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Councilor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. The Committee on Government Operations held a working session yesterday, Tuesday, January 24, on Docet 0135, petition for a special law regarding an act relative to reorganization of the Boston School Committee, which was sponsored by me and Councilor Julia Mejia. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Councilors Ruthie Luizhen, Councilor Liz Braden, Councilor Ed Flynn, Councilor Coletta, and Councilor Lara. This home rule petition would establish a transition from a fully appointed school committee to a fully elected school committee in the city of Boston. As currently written, the legislation takes a phased-in approach to that transition. The working session was an opportunity to go over specific language suggestions, which included a more streamlined phasing of the elected school committee. We've changed the amount of phases in which it's getting phased in, the body structure, and more defined language around vacancies and how they will be filled. This was, in my opinion, a very productive working session. We got a lot of language down. This will be, I will be recommending that the stay in committee with the goal that we have a final working session to put in and sort of address everyone's concerns. February 6 at 2:00 p.m., we will have that working session, so I'm hoping to hear from colleagues. And then the hope is that we can put this before the body for a vote February 15, just to put that on folks' radars. And so, February 6 at 2:00 p.m. is the next working session on this. I've heard concerns from council colleagues on certain aspects of this that I hope we can address and sort of wrap this up cleanly in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend the stay in committee.
Thank you, Councilor Royo. Docet 0135 will remain in committee. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Before we begin, I just want to highlight that matters in this section, many of them are refiles. They already have been discussed last year, so I would like to ask my colleagues to please consider limiting your time when introducing a refile matter. I also want to note that Rule 39 states the original sponsors have three minutes to speak and other counselors have two minutes to speak. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docet 0237?
Docet number 0237, Councilor Fernandez Anderson offered the following, in ordinance and amendment to the Boston Municipal Code in regard to measuring racial equity in affordable housing.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez Anderson. Councilor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer this because we often assume the affordable housing benefits members of the Black and Brown community. However, as we often do, when utilized 78% to 80% AMI and call for affordable housing, that may mean that the masses of Black and Brown, our Black and Brown brethrens, are not actually benefiting. This amendment to the municipal code will act to bring concrete and tangible data to the forefront so that we can better gauge whether and to what extent racial equity is being reached in affordable housing. I look forward to continuing this work with my colleagues for while there are wide sectors from every racial and ethnic group that could benefit from a robust policy of affordable housing. We know that our Black and Brown communities are more likely to be working class, and therefore, we should be reaping a good share of the affordable housing that exists in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, will you please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Lara, Councilor Luizhen, Councilor Mejia, please add the Chair. This Docet 0237 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, will you please read Docet 0238?
Docet number 0238, Councilors Mejia and Flynn offer the following, order for a hearing on accountability and accessibility of language access services in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And because this is a refile, and I honor your lead and keep it brief, I just wanted to suspend the rules and add Councilor Royo as an original co-sponsor.
Hearing no objection. Councilor Royo is added as an original co-sponsor. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to uplift as we continue to dive into this work, especially with budget season soon upon us, it's really important for us to really understand and have a real good sense of what language access looks like here in the city of Boston. For me, language access is not just about making sure that we're translating and having folks able to understand, but this is really about information justice for me. So, look forward to hosting a hearing and diving deeper into the data. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Luizhen, Councilor Murphy. Docet 0238 will be referred to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency, Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0239.
Docet number 0239, Councilors Mejia and Royo offer the following, order for a hearing on expanding access for minority business enterprises into high-volume commercial centers.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is just a refile. I just want to thank my co-sponsor, Councilor Arroyo, as we continue to navigate conversations around who has the right to and resources to be able to really build wealth here in the city of Boston. We need to recognize that Black and Brown businesses should not only be regulated to Dorchester, Roxbury, and Mattapan, that we should be able to have businesses all across the city of Boston. And I look forward to having this hearing so that we can figure out what that's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, Councilor Braden, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Luizhen, Councilor Murphy. Please add the Chair. Docet 0239 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business Professional Licensor. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0240.
Docet number 0240, Councilors Mejia and Lara offer the following, order for a hearing on workforce development housing for city of Boston employees.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I recognize that my colleague, Councilor Rurrell, is not here, so I'm not sure if I'll be able to add him as a third sponsor, but he was in the original hearing order that we filed last year. So, I just want to uplift his name in this because I know he's been really instrumental in making sure that we are having conversations that deal with workforce development and so, and his efforts around housing in particular. So, this is a refile. As we know, we expect city of Boston employees to live here in the city of Boston in order for them to be able to work here, but unfortunately, people can't afford to live here. And I think that the city is well positioned as we continue to have conversations about planning and development, that we really start thinking about what does a workforce development housing initiative really looks like to support our municipal employees. Through the opera of funding process, our office was successful at securing over $750,000 to help support municipal employees. I look forward to learning about what that effort is looking like and how it's shaping up to help support our most vulnerable employees. And the whole idea is to really look at how we can support those who are making under $55,000 a year. So, I look forward to hosting this hearing and, more importantly, not just having a hearing for the sake of hearing, but the whole idea is that once you hear what you need to do, that you actually act upon it. So, I look forward to listening, learning, and, more importantly, doing something about it.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Councilor Rurrell will be added. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Baker, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Braden, Councilor Luizhen, Councilor Murphy. Please add the Chair. This Docet 0240 will be referred to the Committee on Housing, Community Development. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0241.
Docet number 0241, Councilors Mejia and Lara offer the following, order for a hearing regarding the Boston Public Schools transportation system.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a refile. I am grateful to my co-sponsor, Councilor Lara, as we really lean into these conversations with a asset lens and really figuring out what it is that we need to do in this moment in time to help push while also supporting our Boston public schools. So, looking forward to having this hearing and, again, moving the conversation forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, Councilor Braden, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Luizhen. Please add the Chair. This Docet 0241 will refer to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency, Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0242, please.
Docet number 0242, Councilors Mejia and Lara offer the following, order for a hearing on an audit for the Boston Public Schools Special Education Services and Return on
The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Councilor Anderson as an original co-sponsor.
Hearing no objection. Councilor Fernandez Anderson is added. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia.
Again, Mr. President, this is a refile. As we know, the Boston Public Schools has a lot of work to do. We are realizing, most recently, that the previous EL superintendent has moved on, and so there's a lot of transition. So, I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation and figuring out what we need to do to support our most vulnerable English language learners.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Luizhen, Councilor Murphy. Please add the Chair. This Docet 0242 will be referred to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency, Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0243.
Docet number 0243, Councilors Mejia and Royo offer the following, order for a hearing on government transparency and accountability toward surveillance equipment.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a refile, and I just wanted to thank my co-sponsor, Councilor Arroyo, for his steadfast leadership in this space and looking forward to hosting a hearing so we can continue to unpack the data.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Luizhen. Please add the Chair. This Docet will be referred to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docet 0244, please?
Docet number 0244, Councilor Mejia offer the following, order for a hearing on establishing a mental health curriculum in the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And... Thank you, Mr. President. And this is a refile, and I wanted to just kind of really uplift the state of emotional distress that so many of our Boston Public Schools students are facing today. With COVID, we've seen that students have had a hard time adjusting to being back in school, and we could see that behavior playing out in a number of different ways. And when we think about mental health and wellness, you know, I don't think that we have a set standard across all of our Boston Public Schools. So, establishing a mental health curriculum across the entire district from K through 12 is something that I think is what this moment calls for. As someone who struggled with my own mental health while growing up, I know that oftentimes in communities of color, it's one of those conversations that we usually put to the side, but I think if we're really serious in supporting our young people, then we need to make it okay to not be okay. And I think that we need to start teaching our kids at a younger age on how to deal with, how to express their feelings, because we have seen that in our schools right now, young people are being referred and they're ending up in hospitals where there's no beds for them to be able to get the care that they need. And if we could do something in our schools to help create the type of social, emotional, and psychological safety that they need, then we are helping to address the way that they show up. So, I am really looking forward to having this hearing, but more importantly, really figuring out how we can establish a mental health curriculum across all of our Boston Public Schools. One of the things that my office did last year in partnership with clinicians of color is we created a Mental Health and Wellness Ambassador's Program where we had young people who learned about how to identify their own trauma triggers, but then also how to identify those triggers in their peers and connect their peers to the support services that they need. As a response of what happened at the Berk, our office decided to work in partnership slowly, solely with that, with the Berk, because it's the first year that they are out of turnaround status, and it's the first year that they're serving 7th to 12th graders. So, we figured that in order for us to learn if whether or not mental health and wellness is part of the violence prevention strategy, we figured that we create a program that will be able to help us learn what it looks like when we are super intentional about creating spaces where young people can learn about mental health and wellness. So, I look forward to learning from that particular pilot program that we're running and then figuring out how we can replicate it across the city, because what I have realized in my time here is that in order for anything to happen, you have to do it yourself and then help people get inspired by what is possible, and then you can go chase those dollars to implement it. So, with that said, we talk a lot about what we can and cannot do, and oftentimes, you just got to roll up your sleeves and make things happen so that you can address the issues at hand. And that, for me, feels like action, and that just works. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louis Jean, Counselor Murphy. This docket 0244 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0245? We're moving on. Mr. Clerk, can you, docket 0244 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0245?
Document number 0245, Counselors Mejia and Lara offer the following: Order for a hearing examining the implementation and outcomes of restorative justice practices in the Boston Public Schools.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing order was inspired, so, just so that everybody knows, the way that our office works is that we work in deep collaboration with those who are living the realities and/or doing the work. And that's a best practice when you're really thinking about policymaking. And so, in light of all of the conversations that we have been having in regards to violence in our schools, we turn to those who have been deeply rooted in this work. And so, this hearing order is to honor and create space for us to really look at what the Code of Conduct looks like, especially in the wake of 2013, we implemented restorative justice practices. And unfortunately, in the City of Boston, in our Boston Public Schools, in order for this to work, you're going to have to invest dollars. And so, what we have learned is that the Office of Restorative Justice is only staffed by three people for the entire district, which consists of 125 schools. The BPS Department of Safety Services currently employs 75 Boston school safety officers at school sites throughout the city, and intends to spend over $30 million over the next five years. And it is, and this also includes new surveillance cameras. There is a difference in start, and it's time that we stop making incremental changes towards progress. In an effort to undermine such initiatives, then we need to make sure that we are looking at restorative justice practices as part of our toolkit here as it relates to really leaning into the issues of violence and how we are upholding the Code of Discipline. So, I look forward to learning a little bit more and really, you know, at this point, the Boston City Council has an obligation in disrupting the school-to-prison pipeline in our schools by ensuring programming directed to doing just that, that it's transparent with their practices and outcomes in order to ensure that they are held accountable to our students and their parents. Therefore, we're requesting a full audit of the BPS Office of Restorative Justice to provide us with data as it relates to the office practices and the results as it pertains to the impact and those outcomes. So, I look forward to diving into that conversation and again, learning what we need to do to fully invest in restorative justice practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please. Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm going to go through this one first. Please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Louis Jean. Please add the Chair. Docket 0245 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0246? The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara.
Thank you, President Flynn. This hearing order is not a refile, and I know that we're just having the original co-sponsor speak on those, but as the co-sponsor rule 39 states that I get to speak for two minutes.
Okay. I'll give you two minutes, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara.
Appreciate it. And I want to thank Counselor Mejia for being my co-sponsor. I rise today because one of the things that's become obvious is that our students and our families and our communities are really struggling. The impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic is going to have on the overall well-being of our city is going to be unknown to us for a long time, but in some ways, that impact has been, made itself visible in our schools. So, I have not chosen to lend my voice to the symphony of people who are ultimately maligning our children in their most difficult and vulnerable moments, not because I don't think we have a problem in BPS, but because I believe that our children deserve solutions that focus on remedying harm without creating more harm. Restorative justice as a practice is rooted in indigenous principles, and it's built on a system of bringing victims and perpetrators of harm together to take accountability, forgive, and heal. It's a collaborative and cooperative process involving goal-setting and taking action to repair the harm that one has caused. And restorative justice is not absent of consequence or accountability. It empowers victims, and it emphasizes accountability for wrongdoing by requiring repair. I think that BPS can use this incredible tool to create safer, more accountable, and connected school communities, but it only works if it's implemented in the spirit of the practice. This is why we want to hear from BPS about the implementation of restorative justice and from restorative justice practitioners about how we can implement the model effectively and to scale. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
So, I had called the point of order back on docket 0241, and I was an original co-sponsor last year.
Okay. This is a...
I'm sorry, but I, it's a refile.
We're in a, we're in a brief recess. When there's a refile and you, I'm asking the original co-sponsor would speak. I don't know if it's necessary for everyone to speak on a refile, but if it's something, no, certainly the original, the sponsor and the original co-sponsors would be able to speak. But again, as I said the last meeting, these topics are discussed in the hearings, in the working sessions, not during, not really during the Wednesday session, and we have to do a better job at attendance-wise at our hearings and working sessions as well. That's when the, that's when these issues are discussed. On docket 0245, Mr. Clerk, can you add, could you add Counselor Arroyo as an original co-sponsor?
I just, I need some clarity.
Yes, yes, Counsel Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just need some clarity. I just want to make sure that the original co-sponsors that I named in my refile, those are the, those are the folks that I am including in my, in my refile. So, if I didn't name someone, it's because they're no longer an original co-sponsor to something that I'm refiling. There's something really clear about that. Can you just confirm for me that that is the case?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
The, the original co-sponsor will notify us who the, if someone's going to be added to the, to the, to the docket as an original co-sponsor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you.
I'm going to allow Counsel Murphy to speak, and then we're going to go on with this meeting. Again, the, the topics are discussed at the hearings in the working sessions, and it's easy to discuss it now when everyone's here, but I need everyone's attendance at the working sessions and the hearings. That's when these topics are discussed. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. I am not standing to speak on this at all. I just wanted to make sure that on docket 0241, that my name was added, because when I raised my hand, I was passed over. So, thank you. Clerk, if you could add my name to 0241. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you please add Counsel Murphy to docket 0241? On docket 0245, this, this is at the Committee of Education. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 0246.
Document number 0246, Counsel Lara and Flaherty offer the following: Order for a hearing to assess the need for a senior center in the neighborhood of West Roxbury.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Really excited to, I want to suspend rule of the rules and add Counselor Louis Jean as an original co-sponsor for this one.
Hearing no objection. Counsel Louis Jean is added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara.
Thank you, President Flynn. This is a refile from the previous legislative session. For two years, Rosendale and West Roxbury seniors have been organizing to secure a standalone senior center in their neighborhood that would really serve as a central resource place for sharing and a place for community building and connection in a neighborhood like West Roxbury with the highest concentration of seniors in any other neighborhood of the city. At a moment when our seniors are really still recovering from the impact of the isolation during the COVID-19 pandemic, it's really imperative that we prioritize ensuring that services are centralized in the neighborhood where they're most needed, which is why I'm proud to sponsor this hearing order to assess the need for a senior center in West Roxbury. I want to thank the Coalition of Seniors who are working with our office on this issue alongside Ethos and my co-sponsors, Counselor Flaherty and Louis Jean, for supporting this effort. I also want to thank the administration, in particular Chief Massot, Lisa Conley, and Commissioner Emily Shea, who have been incredibly supportive and are looking forward to joining the City Council next month in a conversation on how to make this happen. I'm really hopeful that this entire body agrees that our seniors have dedicated their lives to our city, and they really deserve space where they can congregate with the community right in their neighborhood. I think as an update, Counselor Flaherty asked for an update, some good news is that Representative Ed Coppins actually secured $250,000 for senior programming in West Roxbury. And between my office and H Strong, we have been in collaboration with the seniors to basically create what, and make a recommendation about what those $250,000 would be used for. The Elks Lodge has told us that there's a possibility to use space there. And so, while we move at the speed of local government and figure out how to get a standalone senior center in West Roxbury, we have funding and a location to really centralize services in West Roxbury, at least for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy. Please add the, please add their Chair. Docket 0246 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Before we continue, I know this will be an off-site hearing. Each counselor, as, as you know, is allowed to have one off-site hearing this year, and I want to say thank you to the City Council, central staff for their logistics and coordination support as well. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0247 and 0248 together?
Document number 0247, Counselors Lara and Mejia offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the academic performance and social, emotional well-being of LGBTQ+ students in the Boston Public Schools. And document number 0248, Counselors Lara and Arroyo offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the disproportionate criminalization of the LGBTQ+ community and their health and well-being while incarcerated.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor. And this is a new file, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara.
Thank you, President Flynn. This is, both of these are refiles from last year. And so, last year, our office, last June, actually, as part of our commitment to a more direct and participatory democracy, our office designed a campaign called Letters from the Future, where we asked members of the LGBTQ community all across the city to send us visionary letters that outline the solutions for some of our most pressing issues. Far too often, I think that we talk about policy, we really limit ourselves and what we think is possible by our external conditions that we find ourselves in. So, it's really important for me to be strategic, but I think that that's only one part of the equation. Our ability to see a different world for ourselves and our people is really equally as important. And so, in these letters, queer folks from across the city were clear about what we could do to move beyond pride toward policy. Housing, safety, space for community building, protections for LGBTQ youth, and ensuring safe-affirming spaces for BPS students were all issues of importance that showed up in the campaign, and these two hearing orders are a part of moving the Beyond Pride policy platform forward, and I'm excited to work with my co-sponsors to continue moving this work, this legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. On docket 0247, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Louis Jean, Counsel Mejia. Please add Counselor Murphy. Please add the Chair. Would anyone like to add their name on the next docket, which is 0248? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Louis Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counsel Murphy. Please add the Chair. Okay, I apologize. I didn't forget. Okay. Mr. Clerk, on docket 0247, can we also add Counselor Arroyo? So, docket 0247 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Docket 0248 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. These are the same committee assignments as last year. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0248? I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0249?
Document number 0249, Counselors Lara and Fernandez-Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the impact of inequitable housing code enforcement of Boston's proactive rental inspection program.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. This is also a refile, and I'm refiling this hearing order because our current interventions have proven... have proven to be plagued by the same systemic racism that we see in all of our city agencies. And a policy failure really requires a policy solution. Last year, Harvard released a 10-year study of our housing code enforcement specifically for reported asthma triggers, which showed a 17% longer median response time and a 14% higher probability of cases being overdue and a 54.4% lower probability of repair in neighborhoods with the lowest proportion of white residents. We know that renters are typically slow to report this type of incident for fear of retaliation. So we expect that the number of people living in these private rental units that are exposed to asthma triggers are actually far more significant than we see here. So we're refiling to really just look at the impact of the inequitable code enforcement and see how we can use the proactive rental inspection program to make sure that our renters are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Lara. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Louie Jean, Council Mihia. Please add the chair. This docket, 0249, will be referred to the Committee on Housing, Community Development. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0250?
Docket number 0250, Councils Lara and Arroyo offer the following: Order for a hearing on installing adjustable height basketball hoops in the city of Boston Parks.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I promise, I'm almost done. I am really excited to present this hearing order today. This is a new file, so I would love to hear from our cosponsors. I want to suspend the rules and add Councilor Fernandez Anderson as my third cosponsor here.
Hearing no objection. Council Fernandez Anderson is added. The chair recognizes Council Lara.
Thank you. So last year, our office received a letter from a seven-year-old young man named Jace Serrano. And in this letter, he outlined how much he loved basketball and how much he enjoyed his neighborhood park. But what Jace also shared with me is that he couldn't play basketball at his neighborhood park because the hoops were too high for him, and he was wondering if maybe somebody could do something about it. One, I want to say thank you to Jace for sending his letter, and also to his mother for encouraging this type of civic engagement from him. So I looked into it, and our office took a look into it, and we found out that the only adjustable height basketball hoops available were not only scarce, but most of them were indoors. All of them were indoors. So right now, basketball is the most popular youth sport in America, and it's played by millions of young people in the United States. Around 9.8 million boys and girls ages 6 to 17 played basketball just in 2020. And according to the Sports and Fitness Industry Association, no sport fared better during the COVID-19 pandemic at adding and retaining kids as participants than basketball, as it could be played safely outdoors in small groups and even alone. So in filing this hearing order today, because city-owned parks, playgrounds, and fields are really essential public spaces for community gathering, creative inclusive play, and outdoor recreation, and the lack of age-appropriate equipment is making basketball inaccessible to our tiniest residents. So I'm excited to partner with Council Arroyo and Anderson to get Jace his basketball hoop and make our parks more inclusive of all ages and ability levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. This is a new file, Council Arroyo. The chair recognizes Council Arroyo. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm glad that Council Lara explained the genesis of this project so people didn't think it was just me trying to dunk at our city parks. There is one nine-foot hoop that I won't disclose where it is that I have dunked on. I can't get to 10. But I do think that this is incredibly important, not just for the civic engagement of our youngest members, but because the way that you develop skills and actually train youth, there's a reason why we have T-ball fields for baseball, there's a reason why we have smaller fields and smaller -- in different rule sets. Having our youth learn the fundamentals of basketball by having to sort of have strength that they don't have to get to a 10-foot hoop actually is detrimental to their ability to really learn the sport properly. And so it's my hope that we maybe don't do this in every park. I don't know how the ease and access of this, but that we have selective sort of areas where we can do this, where we can have sort of outdoor courts that are at an appropriate height for our youngest members of the city. So I'm grateful to Council Lara for bringing this forward and for the genesis of it, and I think this will make our parks a better place for families. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Mihia, Council Murphy. Please add the chair. This docket will be -- this docket, 0250, will refer to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, Parks. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0251, please?
Docket number 0251, Councils Lara and Bark offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss establishing a walking city trail connecting urban green spaces across Boston neighborhoods.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would like to suspend the rules and add Councilor Coletta as my third original cosponsor.
Hearing no objection. Council Coletta is added. The chair recognizes Council Lara.
Thank you, President Flynn. And so if anybody knows me or follows me on social media, you know that I spend all of my free time on mountains and hiking. It is one of the only things that I find the time to do, and so I'm really excited to present this hearing order today. Last October, in partnership with Mothers Out Front Boston and Miles Howard, the Environmental Justice Resiliency and Parks Committee hosted a community hike through a 25-mile walking city trail connecting 14 Boston neighborhoods from the Nippon City River to Bunker Hill. The walking city trail is a hiking path through Boston's most immersive parks, urban wilds, community gardens, and greenways. These community hikes were an opportunity to spend time outdoors with community members and constituents, to take a close look at our parks and gather information from our neighbors about how we could make them more accessible, vibrant, and connected. More American cities all across the country are expanding their pedestrian infrastructure with new multi-use trails, connecting paths, and street walks to create long-distance hiking routes. As someone who grew up with the Emerald Necklace, Franklin Park, and the Arboretum as my backyard, the walking city trail has really expanded my idea of where hiking can happen, and I'm excited to collaborate with my colleagues to make it one of our city's official trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. The chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to thank the maker for this, and I enthusiastically add my name to this docket. I had the pleasure of joining Council Lara and others on one of the last legs of their journey across Boston through the North End and through Charlestown. In District 1, we are incredibly blessed to have the lush green ribbon that is the Rose Kennedy Greenway, the Freedom Trail, and the Harbor Walk providing sweeping views of the waterfront. I see this idea as an investment in our collective mental and physical health as a city, as a way to draw economic activities for businesses along the way, and something for Bostonians to be proud of once completed. I do encourage this conversation, as it relates to my district, to prioritize the historical landmarks that tell the story of Boston, both things that we are proud of and things that we are not proud of. I'd also like to see a partnership with the state to ensure our waterfront path receives some love to mitigate the disjointed nature of the Harbor Walk as it stands now. And of course, making it accessible and inclusive of everybody. So wayfinding signs should be in all languages, and paths created so that those in wheelchairs can traverse freely with dignity. So thank you again to the maker, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Council Coletta. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Mihia, Council Murphy. Please add the chair. This docket, 0251, will refer to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0252, please.
Docket number 0252, Council Flaherty offer the following: Order for a hearing regarding public safety measure recommendations for Boston Public Schools and Boston Police.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please, through the chair, could you add the name of Council Aaron Murphy as an original cosponsor?
Council Murphy is added. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. DESI has spoke loud and clear in the most recent audit that the Boston Public School System does not support the physical, social, and emotional well-being of all students, and that it does not ensure a safe environment for all students. Part of the state mandated improvement plan included an evaluation from an independent consultant, Great City Schools, who recently made recommendations and reported them to the Boston School Committee on January 18, 2023. What we do know from almost daily occurrences is that what we're doing now is not working, so I'm making our schools safe. We all hear from parents and grandparents and teachers across the school district that they don't feel safe on their way to school, at school, on their way home to school. The regular, almost routine violence that occurs towards students and educators in the Boston Public Schools requires immediate public safety attention and additional resources and additional actions to ensure a safe learning environment. Does any one person have the answers? No. If we know what's being done now is not working, then we need to look at additional tools to help collaborate and work. And you think of Boston's success stories? Boston's success stories are a direct result of partnerships. We boast of having great partnerships here in the city. We boast of having dedicated professionals at BPS, dedicated professionals at BPD, dedicated professionals here as members of the Boston City Council. Collectively, we can solve this problem. Collectively, we can make our city and our schools safer. And so with that in mind, defer to the chair, obviously, at the appropriate committee, to have a hearing, to bring all of those parties together, again, with no one idea prevailing over another idea. Let's identify what's working and enhance it. Let's identify what's not working and either tweak it or eliminate it so we can truly respond to students and their parents and families, as well as our educators, that everyone should feel safe in their neighborhood. Everyone should feel safe on their way to school, at school, and on the way home from school. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you, Council Flaherty, for adding me as an original cosponsor. I look forward to this hearing and the work in collaboration with the Boston Public Schools, the Boston Police Department, and also the Boston Public Health Commission. We need to make sure that we're talking to our mental health providers also in this conversation. So I know that a lot of this work is obviously going to happen in the hearings. I'll leave a lot of my points to those hearings, but I do want to say I've advocated for children my entire adult life as a Boston Public School teacher, as a mom and a community leader, and I'll continue to do so here on the Boston City Council. Our school system is in need of a lot of help and support. I do believe we need to come together for the children in the city, and that this work has just begun. So all means all, means we need to make sure that all of the children at every school across the city, not just at a few exam schools or a few schools that are doing well, that children deserve a quality education. And if safety isn't in place, education, learning, isn't going to happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please, Council Baker, Council Braden, please add the chair. Docket 0252 will refer to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0253.
Docket number 0253, Council Mihia offer the following: Order for a hearing to audit the city of Boston's procurement processes, procedures, and progress.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Mihia. Council Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to add Council Anderson as an original cosponsor.
Council Fernandez Anderson is added. The chair recognizes Council Mihia.
Thank you again, Mr. President. This is a refile that we brought to the floor towards the end of last year, and we're bringing it back to ensure that we're including microbusinesses, given that most Latino businesses are not small businesses, but microbusinesses. And I want to be very intentional about our inclusivity practices. We also know that in 2020, the city of Boston published a disparity study which indicated a disproportionate underutilization of minority and women-owned businesses. In response to the 2020 disparity study results, in February 2021, the mayor issued an executive order to address and implement outcomes by committing to a utilization goal of at least 25% of contracting with minority and women-owned businesses across all contracts awarded in any fiscal year. Given these stated goals, it is imperative to discern if minority and women-owned businesses, small or micro businesses attempting to contract with the city of Boston are able to compete with businesses that are more knowledgeable and experienced with the city of Boston's procurement process, protocols, practices, and procedures. The executive order attempts to remedy both the historical and current barriers minority and women-owned businesses encounter when interacting with the city's contracting processes. Therefore, it is essential to determine if there are any compounding disadvantages that need to be further identified and properly addressed through an audit of the city's Boston Chapter 30b procurement process, practices, and protocols. And so, you know, I am so incredibly encouraged by this administration's ability to really want to lean into how we're going to support businesses, and I think the best way for us to do that is to be able to do a deeper dive into the data and really figure out what are some of the main barriers that people are facing as they navigate this process. So I look forward to unpacking this in the hearing and, I think, my cosponsor for our leadership in this space. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mihia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Coletta, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean. Please add the chair. This docket will refer to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency, Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, can you read the next docket, 0254, please?
Docket number 0254, Council Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss how the Boston Public Schools can more effectively support the needs of its Muslim students.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council Mihia and Council Louie Jean.
Hearing no objection. Both Council Mihia and Louie Jean are added. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy, and of course, with all due respect, it's your decision. I'm happy to go through all the next six dockets. They are all refiles.
Yeah, Council Fernandez Anderson, the clerk will read them into the record, and then you could read them together. Mr. Clerk, can you read those into the record, please?
Docket number 0255, Council Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss how Boston Public Schools are addressing the needs of the parents of English-language learner students. Docket number 0256, Council Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss ways of creating a partnership between colleges and high schools to create jobs and academic support for students. Docket number 0257, Council Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the need for a health center in Newbyan Square. Docket number 0258, Council Fernandez Anderson and Arroyo offer the following: Order for a hearing to explore digital marketplace pilot program. Docket number 0259, Council Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss renaming the Roxbury branch of the Boston Public Library to the Newbyan Library.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. I want to go through the dockets, or as I speak about them, I'm going to add cosponsors, if that's okay. For docket 0254, again, please suspend rules and add Council Mihia and Council Louie Jean. This is a refile, specifically just looking at or having a hold of conversation to discuss the needs of Muslim students. I'd like to first thank the advocates that have been putting in work in advocating for the needs of Islamic needs or Muslim students in Boston Public Schools. And it is what it says. Specifically, our culture, our needs, prayer, or different types of practices that we have prior to prayer, Ramadan, or even meal or dietary needs are different. And I'd like to explore those conversations. I'd like to thank my cosponsors for partnering with me and doing that work. For docket 0255, I'd like to suspend the rules and add, again, Council Mihia and Council Louie Jean. This is a, again, order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools to address the needs of parents of English-language learner students. I think that there is a need here for Boston Public Schools to address the need of the parents. Oftentimes, children are not set up for academic success if their parents themselves are not able to support them with out-of-school time or structure. And I think that the conversation is warranted in order for us to find ways or resources to support these parents. For docket 0256, again, like to suspend the rules and add Council Louie Jean and Council Mihia. This hearing order is specifically to create a partnership between high schools, or possible partnerships between high schools and colleges. I'm hoping that the conversation can lead to some sort of agreement, whereas YEE, and I'd like to thank Chief Massot, as well as his staff, who's been working with me diligently and looking at ways to and looking at ways to employ our high schoolers while accessing homework support in BPS. And for docket 0256, sorry, I already talked about that, 0257, I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flaherty. This hearing specifically is to discuss Nubian Square Clinic. I know that here, we're calling it a health center, but the community and advocates have been working to fundraise and have done a study that there's a specific need for a clinic in Nubian Square. So I look forward to working with my cosponsors, as well as my colleagues, to discussing the possibilities of that. Docket 0258, again, a refile, like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Worrell. Looking forward to continuing this conversation with my cosponsors, Counselor Arroyo, again, Counselor Worrell, in discussing how we can pilot a program, hopefully, to create or maybe amplify BeLocal in ways that we can be more competitive to the future digital market, that, as you know, Amazon has taken over, and if we can have conversations, how we make our businesses more prepared with technical assistance online or more remote support in bringing them on the digital marketplace or possible trust, I think it would do tremendous progress, or make tremendous progress in the business sector for small businesses specifically, and hopefully piloting, of course, I would volunteer District 7 first. And then for docket 0259, the community advocates also refiled, this is also refiled, the community advocates in Nubian Square, who last year asked, I think, the administration, as well the community, and they've been through several different communities and community meetings and engagement, and surveying the community, and the renaming of the library was technically agreed upon, and now they're looking for, to bring the conversation to the chamber, to have the process take place where the official renaming of the library will turn to, or will be named to Nubian Square Library. That would be all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Mr. Clerk, on docket 0255, would you please add Counselor Mejia, Counselor Luizhen as original cosponsors? Would anyone like to add their name on docket 0255? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Murphy. Please add the Chair. This docket will be, this docket will be in the Committee on Education? On docket 0254, please add Counselor Mejia and Counselor Luizhen as original cosponsors. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara. Please add the Chair. 54?
Oh, please add, we put our hands up.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Braden. Please add Counsel Braden to docket 0254. 0254 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, we did 0255.
Yes.
We're on to 0256. Would you please add Counselor Mejia and Counselor Luizhen as original cosponsors? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Murphy. Please add the Chair. This docket, 0256, will refer to the Committee on Pilot Agreements, Institutional and Intergovernmental Mr. Clerk, on 0257, would you please add Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flaherty as original cosponsors? And would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair. Docket 0257 will refer to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, Recovery. On 0258, Mr. Clerk, will you please add Counselor Worrell? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy. Please add the Chair. Counselor Coletta. On docket 0258, this will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. On to 0259, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Lara, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair. Docket 0259, Counselor Luizhen. Docket 0259 will refer to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 0260.
Docket number 0260, Counselors Coletta and Braden offer the following: Order for a hearing to address the loss of rehearsal spaces for musicians in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'd like to add Counselor Fernandez-Anderson as an original cosponsor.
Hearing no objection. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson is added.
Thank you, and I want to be sure to thank Counsel Luizhen and name her an unofficial fourth sponsor, as she let me know she's been in contact with artists in Brighton as well. And I'd first like to thank the Art Stays Here Coalition, who wrote my office on behalf of the hundreds of musicians who rehearse at Charlestown Rehearsal Studios at 50 Terminal Street. The musicians there have recently been told, without written notice yet, that the owner will turn the rehearsal studios into self-storage, and they will need to vacate by June 1st. The planned change of use will affect 95 music rehearsal studios. Each studio houses between five to 14 musicians. Usually, they double and triple up for the use of the space, and this is going to result in between 400 and 1,100 musicians who will now be displaced. With the closure of the Sound Museum in Brighton, and now this, there are zero available music rehearsal spaces in Boston or the surrounding area. These individuals deserve respect and dignity to have and to work in creative spaces within close proximity. The displacement of musical artists has profound impacts on our cultural legacy as a city. We're home to more incredible acts than I can mention without missing a few legends, but I fear this distressing trend will become a barrier for emerging new editions, Aerosmiths, Oompa's, Out Loud out there, and it is really sad. And I really hope, from this future conversation, we can identify ways in which to incentivize, including artist rehearsal space and new developments by square footage, and ensuring that it is affordable and potentially providing subsidies to help artists afford the space and other avenues the city, the city's Office of Arts and Culture can grow creative spaces in Boston. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Coletta, for including me on this hearing order. We're very much aware of the situation with regard to the Sound Museum in Alston, Brighton, the displacement of musicians due to the development of a former warehouse space. Again, we have another rehearsal place called Studio 52, which was moved from another building that was, is also slated for redevelopment. I really hope that in the course of this hearing, that we can look at a more mindful and deliberate approach to planning for displacement of our artistic community across the city, and in particular in Alston, Brighton. If we don't plan for how we're going to mitigate the impacts of all this new development, then we are going to lose our artist community in the city, and that will be a tremendous loss for all of our communities. And I look forward to this hearing, and thank you again, Counselor Coletta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of keeping this really brief, I just wanted to thank the original cosponsor, Counsel Coletta, and of course, my cosponsor, Counsel Braden. I deeply understand this issue. I used to playwright, produce, and direct theater production with at-risk artists at the Strand Theater, and it's very difficult, not only for us when we're speaking about housing issues, but also to just find rehearsal space. The Strand Theater currently, I know it's under consideration for a different contract or independent contract, or finding a home theater production company, but still, they are only able to offer less than a week for Tech Week, which we all know it's more than a week. And so then, the prices become a little bit too high, and there are lack of spaces. So I hope that this conversation can also lead to how we are addressing the same need in other areas in Boston. So I look forward to the conversation and excited. This is an amazing idea, and I thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Luizhen. Counsel Luizhen, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Council President Flynn. I just wanted to uplift the artists over at the Sound Museum. We've been in communication with them and also with Counsel Braden's offices, obviously a citywide issue, and as a citywide counselor, I do think we need to do what Counsel Coletta said and really make sure that when we're thinking about new development, we think about artist rehearsal space. The artists right now are transitioning to new space, to a temporary space in Dorchester, and it is my hope and want to commend the administration for doing the work of making sure that IQHQ will provide permanent artist rehearsal space in their new development, and it's up to us to hold them to task for that. So I just want to thank everyone, especially the artists who have had to deal with these transitions, and look forward to making sure we hold IQHQ accountable here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Luizhen. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say that through the good work in Dorchester, we were able to accept some of the artists from the, in Brighton, they're going over to the Beasley Building. The developer there that is able to work with us, he's been working with me for years, we have, the building's actually going to be a pretty amazing space. We have a job training workspace going in the garage part of it, 6,000 square feet, and the rest of the place will be converted into, not artist studios, but for band practice sort of thing. Thank you, Mr. President. That's happening in Dorchester in District 3.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, will you please add Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Luizhen, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy? Please add the Chair. And I would like to speak briefly on this and to recognize my neighbor in South Boston at the Fort Point, John Reedy, who does a tremendous job advocating for artists, musicians, especially ensuring young people have access to visual arts and keeping our Boston Public students engaged in the arts and culture and music. So thank you to the Fort Point Neighborhood Association, but thank you to my colleagues for their important work on this issue. Docket 0260 will refer to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Special Events. We're on to docket 0261. Mr. Clerk, will you please read that into the record?
Docket number 0261, Counselor Murphy offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the results of last year's youth summer jobs programs and the social, emotional benefits of summer employment.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. My goal for this hearing order is to work closely and collaboratively with the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment and to make sure that all of the 6,000 summer jobs are filled this summer. That's the goal. I think absolutely, if we work collaboratively, we can get to that goal. The commitment to youth development and social, emotional health includes providing employment during the summer months. Summer jobs promote confidence, skill-building, networking, self-management, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, and of course, income. Last year, a grant funding component was added, providing youth wages for grantees. The goal was to expand the job opportunities by partnering with organizations to increase the diversity and quality of workforce development opportunities for the young people of Boston. I knew I helped several children get jobs at the Artists for Humanity in South Boston in your district, Council President Flynn, and it was a great opportunity for them. So the diversity, and, oh, so DYEE, the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment, was awarded 2.2 million for nearly 1,200 youth positions, which is going to continue this summer. So I also just want to say that the rule on the Committee of Strong Women, Families, and Community that Counselor Braden shares says the committee shall work to help encourage nonprofit youth agencies to work to encourage, to work with the city to help our youth develop into healthy adults. So I'm happy that this hearing order will go into that committee, and I'll work closely with Counselor Liz Braden to make sure that we're uplifting the benefits of youth employment, but we're also working with the Success Link and also different departments, including the Boston Public Schools across the city. I hear too often that parents or children find out after deadlines that these opportunities were there for their children, or kids find out that they could have had a summer job and they didn't know about it. So uplifting it now, early, before the summer months come, is important to me. So thank you very much, Council President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Would anyone, Counsel Baker, did you want to speak on this?
No, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Lara, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair. Docket 026, I'm sorry, docket 0261 will refer to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Docket 0262 has been withdrawn at this time. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0263.
Docket number 0263, Counselors Fernandez-Anderson and Worrell offer the following: Resolution to request Walgreens to postpone all closures of Boston locations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President Flynn. At this refile, sadly, Walgreens has proceeded to close the stores that were under discussion when I initially filed the order. As such, we now seek Walgreens to not open any new locations in Boston until they have properly dealt with the community's impact. By their recent closures in Roxbury, Matapan, and Hyde Park, I'm still seeking for a hearing on this, so I'm not going to ask for suspension and pass. I think everything is a conversation. There was a lot of backlash from, I guess fictitious, or maybe they're real people on Twitter, and I just wanted to address that and say, I'm asking for a conversation here in the chamber. Last time I stood up and spoke on this issue, I think we almost had unanimous support to pass this resolution. So for now, again, refiling and extending for a conversation to hold a hearing first. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Luizhen, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy? Please add the Chair. This docket, 0263, will refer to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0264?
Docket number 0264, Counselor Flynn offer the following: Resolution celebrating Lunar New Year and the contributions of our AAPI community.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, may I add Counsel Murphy as an original cosponsor?
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Murphy is added as a cosponsor. You may continue.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. We're celebrating Lunar New Year. It's an important time in the- It's an important time in the Asian culture here, here in Boston, but really across the world. And it's a time for families to come together to celebrate the enormous contributions and sacrifices of Asian-Americans that they have made to our, to our city here in Boston, but also across the country. And, and I say that because over this country has a long history, in my opinion, of anti-Asian racism, and it really goes back to the start of our, our country. But the, just as a couple of examples, the transcontinental railroad that was built primarily by, by the Chinese community and Irish laborers, but the, the Chinese community built the, the train system. And what did the United States do after we built, after they built the train system? We, we enacted the Chinese Exclusion Act, which was the first time we implemented a immigration act that ensured Chinese couldn't come to the United States. During World War II, when the United States was engaged in, in fighting Japan and Germany, the United States put in prison, prison camps basically, Japanese and Japanese-Americans, mostly ultimately West Coast, but just for their, just for the, just because they were Asian, just because they were Japanese. We saw two horrific, actually three horrific incidents recently that were impacted by the Asian community, including the most recent ones in, in California, where many Asians were killed just, just for being Asian. And I reference that because these hate crimes continue in our country, right here in Boston, the most liberal and the most progressive city in the country. We have hate crimes right here. Short walk from here, an elderly woman, an Asian woman was beat up in Chinatown. It happens frequently, unfortunately, in Boston. Happens a lot across the country. And I think of that because, as, as you know, I, I served in, served in the military with Asians, Asian-Americans, and here they are willing to die for our country in harm's way certainly, and their parents or their grandparents are, are beat up, are bullied, intimidated. So that's a real significant problem we have in the country. I was reading the newspaper this morning on the, on the internet, The Wall Street Journal, and the front page, the, the article was entitled, "Do We Have Too Many Asians?" as we just had two horrific incidents of, of homicides against the Asian community. This is what The Wall Street Journal had, are there too many Asians basically in our country. Certainly, to me, that's really outrageous, but it's, it's almost an, it's almost an invitation to target the Asian community because of the color of their skin. So certainly, we want to celebrate the important sacrifice, contributions that the Asian communities have made to our city, to our country. We have an outstanding mayor, Mayor Wu, who is our colleague, obviously. I've been working with her on many of these issues for six years now. But as we celebrate the Lunar New Year, it's important for us to acknowledge the history in our country, the anti-Asian racism, bullying, intimidation, but also to recognize and celebrate their enormous contributions, sacrifices to Boston and to the United States. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counsel Murphy, you have the Chair, the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden, and thank you, Counsel President Flynn, for your tireless advocacy for our AAPI community. Part of Boston's richness is the ability of so many communities to retain their ties to and affection for their ancestry or their lands they were born. We are a city of immigrants and those who welcome immigrants, and the AAPI community has been such a vibrant, vibrant part of our city's fabric for so long. My heart goes out to anyone feeling pain and shock after the back-to-back mass shootings. The rise in hate crimes is disturbing, and the violence against our AAPI community needs to stop. I look forward to celebrating with our AAPI community over the next several days to celebrate Lunar New Year. Gong Hao Fat Chow, if I pronounced that correctly. So thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. I also wanted to say Happy Lunar New Year to our AAPI community, Gong He Fat Choi. I've had a really great time celebrating and uplift, and community, even as an ally, to just be part of the banquets and to watch the performances and the lion dances and to eat, eat the really great food. I feel really welcome at each celebration, and I'm grateful for that. Also, just want to, again, uplift those who lost their lives in Monterey Park and for us to continue to do the work of making sure we're getting at the root causes of violence and making sure that we are meeting people who are dealing with trauma, intimate partner violence, all of that, that really is at the root cause of a lot of the violence that we see here. So I just also want to uplift the names of those who passed away. A lot of them were elderly and who have, this was not their first Lunar New Year celebration, and that they lost their lives as they were celebrating was really, really tragic. So of the names of the 11 victims, Mai Nan, who was 65, Lillian Lee, who was 63, Jujuan Yu, who was 57, Moi Ung, who was 67, Hong Jian, who was 62, Yu Kao, who was 72, Chia Yao, who was 76, Valentino Alvera, who was 68, Wen Yu, who was 64, Ming Ma, who was 72, Diana Tom, 70. May their memory be a blessing.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counselors Flynn and Counsel Murphy seek suspension of the rules and ad. Oh, yes, beg your pardon, everyone. Who would like to add their names? Counselor Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louis Jean, Counsel Mejia? And please add my name also. Counselors Flynn and Murphy seek suspension of the rules and adaptation of document 0264? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This document has been adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Thank you, Counsel Braden, for all your work on helping the AAPI community in your area of Austin-Brighton as well. We're onto personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, can you please read document 0265?
Document number 0265, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 0265. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Document 0265 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read document 0266?
Document number 0266, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Mejia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 0266. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you read document 0267, please?
Document number 0267, Counsel Flynn for Counsel.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 0267. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're onto late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are 10, there are 10 additional late file matters. These late file matters include two letters of absence, two personnel orders, two orders of appointment from the mayor's office, three notices of appointments from the mayor's office, one hearing order from Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. These late, late file matters should be on everyone's desk. We'll take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. These late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, the first late file matter and the second late file matter into the record, please, which are letters of absence?
From Boston City Council, Kenzie Bock. Dear President Flynn, I regret that this Wednesday, January 25th, I have to miss my first weekly meeting since becoming a city council more than three years ago due to a personal obligation that has me traveling outside the city. I intend to watch the entire meeting or follow up as necessary with yourself and other colleagues on any matters raised. Sincerely, City Council, Kenzie Bock. And from City Council, Brian Worrell. Dear President Flynn and council colleagues, please be advised that I am unable to attend today's city council meeting due to familial commitments. My staff will be in attendance, and I will review the tape of the meeting when it becomes available. Thank you, Counselor Worrell.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the third late file matter into the record, which is a personnel order from Counsel Fernandez-Anderson? Mr. Clerk, on those two previous late file matters, can you place those into the record, please?
Place them on file.
Place my file. And can you please read the late file matter, the personnel order?
First personnel order, Counsel, from Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has passed. Mr. Clerk, the fourth late file matter, which I believe is also personnel, personnel order from myself?
Personnel order from Counsel Flynn.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This one has passed. Mr. Clerk, the fifth and sixth late file matter into the record, which are appointments to the Boston Public Health Commission?
Yes. From the Office of the Mayor, Mayor Michelle Wu, I transmit here with, for your approval in order confirming the reappointment of Rebecca Gutman as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health. And the second appointment, also from Mayor Michelle Wu, I transmit here with your approval in order confirming the appointment of Dr. Elsie Tavarez for the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These late file matters, the fifth and sixth, will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the seventh, eighth, and ninth late file matters into the record, which are notices of appointment for Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission?
From the Office of the Mayor, Mayor Michelle Wu, pursuant to the authority vested in me by the City of Boston Code, Ordnance, Chapter 2, Section 15, I hereby appoint Vivian Leonard as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Commission. Second appointment from Mayor Wu, pursuant to the authority vested in me by the City of Boston Code, Chapter 12, Section 15, I hereby reappoint Sammy Nibolsy as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission. And the third letter from Mayor Michelle Wu, pursuant to the authority vested in me by the City of Boston Code, Chapter 2, Section 15, I hereby reappoint Vivian Lee as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These late file matters will refer to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the 10th late file matter into the record, which is a hearing order from Counsel Fernandez-Anderson?
Offered by Counsel Fernandez, Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, order for a hearing to discuss how the city budget is addressing equity, whereas in 2020, the City of Boston declared racism as a public health crisis, and whereas 80% of white residents own a home, while 33% of American, percent of American, less than 20% of Dominican and Puerto Rican, and 50% of Caribbean black residents are homeowners. And be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to gather data and information from the city's various departments and the community to ensure that the city budget is meeting equitable threshold allocations in order to monitor and measure the progress regarding equity in housing, capital investments, economic opportunity to support generational wealth creation, health equity, food access, hiring and leadership diversity, pay equity, streets, transportation and sanitation, arts and culture, environment, energy, open space, and climate justice, youth development, civic engagement, and 311 response data, and COVID-19 recovery for marginalized communities.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before I continue, I just want to make sure everyone has that document on their desk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Louis Jean.
Counsel Louis Jean is added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't belabor this. This is a refile. I'm filing this hearing order to basically hold conversations or working sessions pre-budget season so that we can talk about possible implementation of metrics. I know that the city has a dashboard, whereas I think the intention is to hopefully provide the data on equity or how we're doing in terms of hiring equitably or spending equitably across districts. But currently, we're not actually providing those data in terms of comparison analysis between districts or by demographics. So I, I would like to have the conversation about implementing metrics, but also possible ideas or programs that could actually measure whether or not we are driving people out of poverty in Boston. So I look forward to working with my co-sponsor and my colleagues to discussing this matter. But I'm going to just announce in advance that as the Chair of Ways and Means, I'll be holding hearings specifically, or sorry, rather, working sessions ahead of the budget season so that we can actually just evaluate how the funds have been, been spent and how we're doing on equity ahead of time so that we can have that conversation moving forward toward the budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mejia? Please add the Chair. This late file matter will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, we're going into the, well, we're going into the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the sheet, from the green sheets may do so at this town, at this time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove three matters. We'll start with the first one, Alex.
Have to read them into the.
Yeah, okay, so it's document number 0103 on page 5 of 9.
Yep.
And the other two documents, Counsel.
And the second one is, is document 0106 on page 5 of 9, and the third one is 0107 on page 6 of 9.
Mr. Clerk, will you read those into the record, please?
Document number 0103 from the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the 2022 Transportation Planning Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission to be administered by the Boston Transportation Department. The grant will fund a portion of the design costs for the Sullivan-Rutherford Avenue project. And document number 0106, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jean Tenato as a member of the zoning vote of appeal for a term expiring May 1st, 2024. And document number 0107, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $167,104 in the form of a Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program grant from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the procurement and development of Level 3 DC fast-charge electric vehicle charging stations in Alston, Dorchester, Hyde Park, and Rosendale that be available to the general public for 24 hours a day.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you pull the committee to ensure it's properly before the body? We'll, we'll start with 0103. We'll start with 0103.
Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation, docket number 1013. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Braden. Counselor Lara.
Yes.
And Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Document number 1016 on the Committee on Planning, Development-
06.
06, sorry. Planning, Development, Transportation. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Braden. Counselor Lara. And Counsel Flaherty. And docket number 0107, Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Lara.
Yes.
And Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
All properly before the body.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. They're properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Just speak on the first one or all three together? Does it matter?
No, whatever is convenient.
Okay, I'll just do all three of them. 0103 is a grant that's coming from the Gaming Commission for some part of the design in Sullivan-Rutherford Avenue Project, small dollar amount, $200,000. We'll get that in there and moving along so we can start planning that. 0106 is the confirmation of Jeanne Tenado, who I actually know Jeanne, I've been on city-to-city trips with her. I think she'll be a good addition to the zoning board. And 0107 is a grant, a grant of $167,104. I said that wrong. $167,104. Thank you, sorry about that. A grant for charging stations in neighborhoods of Alston, Dorchester, High Park, and Rosendale. Again, a relatively smaller amount. I'd like to just move the three of those along if possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Mr. Clark, we'll start with the docket 0103. Counsel Baker moves for passage of docket 0103. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Doubt the vote?
Mr. Clark, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 0103. Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernando Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernando Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Counsel Lara, yes.
Counsel Luojen.
Yes.
Counsel Luojen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell. Docket number 0103 has received a voted affirmative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The docket has passed. Counsel Baker moves for confirmation of the reappointment of docket 0106. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it.
Doubt the vote?
Mr. Clark, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket 0106. Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernando Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernando Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Luojen.
Yes.
Counsel Luojen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell. Docket number 0106 has received an affirmative vote.
The docket has passed. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Counsel Baker moves for passage of docket 0107. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it.
Doubt the vote?
Mr. Clark, can you, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Document number 0107, roll call vote. Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernando Anderson. Counsel Fernando Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Luojen.
Yes.
Counsel Luojen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell. Docket number 0107 has received an affirmative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This docket has passed. We're onto the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are two additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're onto memorials, and I know several of my colleagues would like to speak during this time as well, so just please hit the button, but today, we're going to adjourn our memory of the following individuals. Counselor Royal. Herb Briggs. Counselor Baker, Flynn, Flaherty. Patrick Mannion. Counselor Braden. George McCormick. Dennis Minahan. Counselor Flynn. Brian McLennan. Counsel Flynn and Flaherty, Brian Burns. Counsel Lara. Emmanuel Paz Turan. Keenan Anderson. Dry Nichols. Counsel Murphy, Baker, and Flaherty. Heidi McElwen. McElwen. Counsel Murphy. Kristoffine Otto. Counsel Luojen and the entire city council. Cornelia Kelly, the former headmaster, head of school at Boston Latin. For Counsel Flynn, Lara, and the entire council, the victims of the Monterey Park shooting. The victims of the Half Moon Bay shooting as well. For Counsel, for Counsel Flynn and the entire city council and at the respectful request of City Council President Charles Yancy, Otto F. James. And I also want to recognize his widow, who was in the audience here today, Elaine. The Chair calls on my colleagues to offer comments about some of their loved ones, family, friends at this time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak about two situations. The first one is the two children in Duxbury that lost their lives, whatever the circumstances are, whatever sort of illness was running through that home, that we keep those two children in, in the eighth-month-old and the mom and dad, we keep them in there. You know, we pray for them and hope that it, you know, there's some sort of solace there. And I also want to mention, he passed away about a month ago. He was my last uncle on both sides, so all moms, all moms, brothers are dead, and then this was my last uncle to pass away, Uncle Dick, who's a railroad guy. He, in 1966, married a black woman. I had two black first cousins that I hung out with regularly during busing, which helped me to form who I am today. Just want to remember him and remember my generations that were before us. They're all gone now, so just wanted to give him a mention. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. I'm going to continue around. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand today to pay tribute to two of our elder statesmen in our neighborhood of Alston, Brighton, George McCormick and Dennis Minahan. They're both retired veterans. George McCormick was a lifelong Alston resident. He proudly served his country in the United States Air Force, working as a machinist on all kinds of aircraft and applying some of the many skills he learned in the automotive program at Brighton High School. He loved to sing and dance. He had a wonderful baritone voice, and he was a fixture in the many, many annual parish shows that he helped organize and run. And he had a large family, also wonderful singers, so it was like the Van Trapp family. They all loved to sing together. You know, George was a wonderful neighbor and friend to many, and he will be sorely missed in our, in our community. And Dennis Minahan, also a veteran, retired veteran, well-known to the Alston-Brighton community as a successful business owner, who built, he built a business in Brighton Center, Minahan's Flower and Garden Shop. He always greeted you with a wonderful smile. He was well-known for his avid support of Boston, BC, Boston College Eagles, and was a very proud graduate of Boston College. He's well-known for his support and dedication to a program called Music with Heart. It's a wonderful organization in our neighborhood that travels around and sings in homeless shelters and retirement homes, et cetera. His standard piece was a great rendition of Danny Boy. And he served his country faithfully as a captain in the United States Marine Corps, and I'd like to honor them this afternoon as we, as we remember those fallen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. Counsel Fernando Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the weekend, I lost my first cousin on my father's side and in Cape Verde, and I just ask you to pray for him that, that he, his sins are forgiven, that all of his good deeds are accepted, and that he may have rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernando Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We adjourn in memory of Patrick Mannion, son of Dorchester in Ireland, just overall great kid, 50 years of age, leaving a wife and three children, died suddenly. He was a huge sports fan, particularly hockey, played two, three nights a week in a hockey league, and coincidentally, passed away suddenly after watching the Bruins game in the middle of the night. So our thoughts and prayers are with the Mannions. It's an extended family throughout Dorchester and actually overseas in Ireland, just a great family. He was a great person, great kid, beautiful smile. Everyone wanted to be around him. It was a sort of infectious in terms of his smile and his gift to bring people together and to lighten the room. So our thoughts and prayers are with the entire Mannion family this, today, as we adjourn.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Luojen. Counsel Luojen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Cornelia A. Kelly, the first female leader of Boston Latin School, who had a tenure of nine years as the head of school, who started her career at Brighton High School, grew up in Eggleston Square. If you've ever met her, she's a tiny woman but packed a lot of power. And she was my head of school when I was a student at Boston Latin School, and I am grateful that I had her as my head of school. She could make you do the right thing with just a look. She was fierce. She was intimidating, but under all of that was a lot of love, and I got to really realize that love as a class leader, class vice president. I worked very closely with her, where she really allowed us to really push on what we thought was possible in creating a culture and a school class where we all felt welcome and invited, and that meant everything from having unconventional bake sales to car washes to redefining how we shared space during study time to graduations at the pavilion. She was just an incomparable figure, and even after retiring, she remained committed to the school community, always at the Thanksgiving football games, November dinners. She was just an icon for so many in the school community. So Boston has lost a big educator, and I just want to lift her up. Mrs. E. mentioned her passing, and it's having a real big impact on the community. And so I just want to say to Cornelia Kelly, who was also a very big supporter and encourager of mine as I became an adult, we miss you, we will forever honor you. And she would always say things in Latin, and you'd always have to look it up because you wouldn't understand, but I'd like to leave her memory with this. Magistra ave acue vale. Fare thee well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Luojen. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. So I would like to uplift Heidi Kahoon-McEwen, who was a mother and a wife, but the reason I want to speak her name at this meeting is she worked in our Boston Public School system. She was a special ed coordinator and educator advocating for our children, and she took her own life last week. And we talk a lot about making sure we're advocating for our students in the Boston Public Schools, and we're recognizing the mental health crisis that so many of our youth are going through due to this pandemic, and I just want to also recognize that our educators are struggling, and we need to make sure that we keep them in our prayers and also use our counsel to also support and advocate those who are working alongside our children every day. So thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. I wanted to recognize the Hogan family in South Boston, Dick Hogan, who was a United States Navy veteran, Korean War veteran, well-respected community leader in South Boston. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family. And to our neighbors in Charleston and Chelsea, former Senate President Tom Birmingham as well, who passed away recently, our thoughts and prayers are with, with his family. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of all those individuals mentioned today. We are scheduled to meet again in the Ayala Chamber on Wednesday, February 1st, at 12:00 noon. Before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the clerk and his wonderful staff. I want to say thank you to the city council central staff. I want to say thank you to my colleagues and your team as well for the important work your staffs are doing. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.